Raise your right hand. Okay, Ms. Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. And Councilwoman Schwartz. We will call the work session to order. It is Tuesday, January 28th, 2014. We have two items on the agenda. A previously scheduled item of an E311 update, and then a carryover from last week. A briefing on the Crosswinds. Let me see if I say it right.
Comments?
Crosswinds Commons CID proposal. City Manager?
Thank you, Councilwoman Hiller. I would, at this point, like to have Jeff introduce where we stand in terms of the Crosswinds Commons project. We'd like to take that one first, maybe take 20, 25 minutes, answer any questions. We are bringing this forward for action today, and Jeff can talk about what's happened since last week. I do want to apologize, everybody, just for the confusion last week. And David, Christie and I had an opportunity to chat a couple of times during the week. And I think we both agree, and everybody else that's been involved in the process agrees, that we really have ended up with a much better product than what we would have had last week. And so, I appreciate, I express my appreciation to David on the phone, and I do so again personally for his patience and willingness to work with us. So, at this point, I'll turn it over to Jeff. He can give a quick overview, and then maybe a few words from David.
Madam Chairman, members of the council, good evening. I'm going to walk through briefly what we're asking you to do on tonight's agenda. Talk a little bit about mechanics, and then ask the petitioner to describe the project to you in more detail. We'll let him do the exciting stuff. So, the ordinance before you tonight would create a community improvement district, what I'll refer to as a CID, of approximately 13 acres on the west side of Wanamaker Road, south of 11th Street. A CID is a defined geographic area created under Kansas law, the occupants of which may petition the city to impose additional sales taxes and/or special assessments upon themselves for up to 22 years. The city has one CID in place. The CID Act is relatively new to Kansas, and the city has one CID in place, which is Holiday Square at 29th and Topeka. The developer, Christie Development, and its development entity created for this particular project proposes to site an approximately 70,000-square-foot Academy Sports retailer, along with three restaurants new to Topeka, a small new retailer, a renovated Orchardland, and a Jo-Ann Fabric. The developer will describe the project in more detail in a sec. As an inducement to make this roughly $25 million total investment, the developer has requested up to $5.4 million in CID incentive, paid for by an incremental one-cent sales tax on retailers in the district, plus receipts from a sales tax reimbursement agreement. The sales tax reimbursement agreement would take general fund sales tax receipts generated by the Academy Sports, the three new restaurants, and the one new small retailer, and would rebate 80% of those receipts each year after the taxable retail sales within the CID, including both new and existing retailers, exceeded approximately 150% of current sales tax within the district. The threshold accelerates at 1.5% annually, starting in 2016, and it expires after 15 years. There are no property tax-based incentives for this project. 100% of the net new property tax is generated by the development will accrue to the city and to other taxing entities within the city from day one. The CID ordinance permits the future issuance of bonds secured solely by the revenues of the project. No general obligation or general fund support. But any actual bond issue would require subsequent action by the council to adopt a bond ordinance and resolution. So, statute requires, if we want to ever issue bonds out of the CID, that we include that request in the petition, include it in the ordinance creating it. But we're not actually asking the city to issue bonds today. The city has a CID policy in place that requires a formal review process by a staff review team, and also requires the city and the developer to produce a fully negotiated development agreement at the time of formal consideration of adoption of the CID by the council. And that's really what's caused us to ask you for delays as we've gone along, is that process of getting to a fully negotiated development agreement. The staff review committee met late last year to review the project, found that the project was in compliance with the city CID policy, and made recommendations with respect to the structure of the incentive package, if one were to be granted. The key debate by the staff review team was whether incentives were appropriate to attract retail to the Wanamaker Corridor at all. And the group ultimately determined that this area of Wanamaker contains some of the oldest retail users on Wanamaker, and would benefit from a project of this magnitude. Staff also discussed the importance of mitigating retail substitution. That is, trying to avoid paying incentives to generate sales taxes that would have occurred in the city anyways, through the structure of the incentives package. From the threshold structure of the STRA to the STRA applying only to new retailers to new retailers and restaurants, sorry, within Topeka, and to the 100% pass-through of the property tax benefits from the project, we feel that we've adequately protected the city from the negative potential impacts of retail substitution. Columbia Capital, the city's financial advisor, developed a public investment cost-benefit analysis to determine whether the proposed project with incentives would be expected to produce net benefits from the perspective of a Topeka taxpayer. That modeling shows a net present value benefit over the 22 years of $3.6 million versus the status quo, taking into account the direct benefits and costs of the project only. We didn't look at spin-off effects and those kinds of things. Staff's recommendation is adoption of the ordinance as revised before you tonight. And you do have a revised version of the ordinance for first reading, which contains some language cleanups related to the issuance of bonds, and also notes that the public hearing has been continued a couple of times. Council adoption of the ordinance would permit the city manager to execute the development agreement that has been fully negotiated between the parties at this point. So, with that introduction, Madam Chairman, I would suggest the developer be permitted to provide a brief overview of the development itself. And in real time, I'll get their presentation up here.
Okay, and will that be Mr. Christie or Mr. Warner?
Mr. Christie, please.
Oh, we've got some questions for you.
Sure.
While he comes up? Go ahead.
Thank you. I guess I want to make sure I understand this. The, so that $3 million benefit to the city is over 22 years?
It's over 22 years. It's in, it's-
In 22 years, we may see a $3 million benefit. Is that-
When you look at all of the benefits and the costs of the project over that 22 years, and you discount all those cash flows back to today, we're saying there's a net present value benefit. So, obviously, the project is adding new property tax base with these new stores, but it's also demolishing part of what's there. So, we have a benefit, which is new dollars, and a cost, which is old dollars that'll go away. So, we look at all those over that 22 years, and then discount it back to present day. And that's where that 3.6 comes from.
Is there any loss at all, or is it just that $3 million benefit?
That's the net. So, that takes into account both gains and losses.
Okay, and then one more follow-up. And that's- If everything stays in business for 22 years, correct? Don't stay in business for 22 years?
Right. If they don't stay in business for 22 years, then presumably the benefits would go down, and that 3.6 million would be skinny down over time. At the sa- At the same time, the way, the same way the incentive, the way the incentive package is structured, the amount of incentive, which is considered to be a cost in our model, would also decline, because the incentive is based upon the performance of the project as well. So, you'd have both a decline on the benefit side and a decline on the cost side as well.
Other questions before we have Mr. Christie? Mr. Christie?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you so much for the opportunity to visit. David Christie with Christie Development, based out of Oval Park, Kansas. We're finally here. We're thrilled to be here. Thrilled to be bringing this project forward, which has been a labor of love for both the staff. I had an opportunity to be introduced to the mayor and the city manager many months ago, and said, "We want to do this." And they set us on a track for success, and it's been, it's been great. We really appreciate the respect and the courtesy of the staff, and had a chance to visit with many of you personally, the governing body, to talk about what we were doing. I think we share with you privately, if we had a chance to meet with you, that we brought a project forward many, many years ago, that we didn't take the time to introduce the governing body to the project that we were bringing forth. And we felt like this would be the time to do that, and educate you on what we were trying to accomplish. The project, this particular shopping center's in flux right now. And we saw an opportunity to get, we had, many of you know, we acquired the vacant Home Concepts, I think it was called, from Core First Bank. And, you know, we spent, I think, $3 million remodeling it. And we just signed our, we basically signed our last lease this week, so it'll be 100% leased, and we're thrilled. And we believe that that's going to go on the tax rolls between $6 and $8 million. And we acquired it for over $2. So, of course, we spent that much, you know, we put $3 million in it, but we're very proud of it, and did not need incentives. We had high rents. We didn't have any problems with existing tenants that had, that had a lower, more favorable rent. So, we're thrilled about that project, and appreciate the opportunity to have brought that project forward. I've been doing, and I realize I have about 10 minutes, so I'm going to try to hurry through this. Please stop me and interrupt me if I'm not doing. We've been doing this since 1979. I started in the real estate business in Dallas, Texas. Leased shopping centers for Trammell Crowe and Lincoln Property Company as a real estate broker. And that's where I learned the business, and have done retail development, and a little bit of apartment development, a little bit of office, but primarily retail nearly all of my life, since '79. We've got a great staff in Matt Pennington and Dave Olson. And are you going to flip these?
Yeah. I'd like to connect all the slides, or do you have a clicker that we could do?
I can drive for you. Yeah.
Yeah, he has it up here. It's just on the screen.
Did we give them the hard copies of the PowerPoint?
No.
We're sitting here talking, and I'm sorry. We brought hard copies as well for the-
Okay.
Put you straight up to the front, so.
Yeah, all right.
So, anyway, and Dave Olson, who handles our construction, who has been a tremendous asset to our group, who developed over 500 Home Depot projects when he was with Castile Corporation. And I had done a lot of Home Depot projects for the Depot Company, and met him, and he was looking for a change, so it's been a benefit. On the third slide, Matt, regarding past projects, many of you have lived here a long time. The oldest project I did, I met Mr. Warner in the early 90s, when I acquired Highland Village Shopping Center, which was converted to California Crossing. I bought that from Travelers Life Insurance, and converted it, and fully leased it. I put Ward Whelan in the, in part of the space, and he had a lumberyard in there, Walgreens was in there. And I sold that to, in 1997, bought it in '92, to a New York Investment Group, which I think still owns it, but it's called California Crossing. With Jim Bowersfeld, many of you remember that name, I acquired Sutton Plaza in North Topeka, and changed it to Bowersfeld Marketplace, and renovated it in 1997, and sold that to my partner, which was JDN Realty Company out of Atlanta. And so, that's been renovated. I bought from Ward Whelan his old lumberyard on 21st Street, and converted that, and leased that to Maximus Fitness and some other retailers that are there. And I believe that project's still leased. And then, the only project that we were unsuccessful in developing was the Water Tower Project, which I brought forth. We had leases and commitments, and did not do a good job shepherding the process. And that, and hence, we spent the time to meet you, introduce ourselves, and say, "We'd like permission to develop in your community." A little bit about those projects. A little bit on our current projects. We recently finished a renovation of an 80,000-square-foot shopping center that was vacant for nine years on the Belt in North St. Joe, Missouri. It was done under a CID. We brought Dick's Sporting Goods, Pet Smart, Aldi, and built Verizon and Starbucks on the corner. That property has since been sold. And acquired it, and I think it's on the tax rolls at $8 million, and I think it was on the tax rolls at $1.4 million when we acquired it. We paid more than that for it, but the city has seen a substantial benefit in St. Joe, Missouri. We did Gregory Square. We tore down a car dealership in Raytown, Missouri. If many of you may know where that is, on the east side of Kansas City, Missouri. And built an Aldi store in the retail center there. And it was an old 1960s car dealership. We're currently, we bought a defunct, we do a lot of bank deals that we buy. We bought a defunct shopping center at 67th and I-35. Many of you know where that is. And I did an auto mall with Lexus, Toyota, and Infiniti, and created about, I think, I think the assessed value is nearly $40 million in property tax valuation with those monster buildings. Of course, they're 70, 80,000-square-foot car dealerships, and in hundreds of millions of dollars worth of sales. So, the city of Mariam is very happy with that project. We're currently on a construction in Shawnee, Kansas, with a 90,000-square-foot renovation. Bought a shopping center, had been vacant eight years, and turned it around, and put nuts and bolts. We've done a natural grocers with our friends, the McPhersons, out of Topeka, who are developers for natural grocers. And that's been a great relationship that we've enjoyed. And we plan to use McPherson on the renovation of the Topeka project here. We have a lot of confidence in them, and they're local. They can get local subs involved and make the process more expeditious. So, we're certainly excited about that. That was, we bought this project for about $2.5 million, and we've spent about $12.5 million renovating it. Jeff is familiar with it, because he drives by it. But it's, it's a labor of love. We closed, rebuilt a brand-new street, basically got four acres of city right away abandoned, and put natural grocers, and we're doing Pepper Jacks and a few other restaurants there in the front. So, we're excited about that. Quickly about the project. The project's 13 acres. We're acquiring, we're acquiring an additional- So sorry, please forgive me. What an idiot, I'm sorry. We are acquiring a Mr. Klosman's property, which is an office building. And Mr. Klosman is building a new building. And it's a two-story office building on the north end of the 13-acre parcel that will be, will be raised, both to create better visibility to the retail, because it's obviously a two-story. If you guys have seen it, it's very, it's a good-looking property, but it's very tall and very imposing, right there in our parking lot. So, we're tearing that down, and that will be used for the future expansion of Orchardland's outdoor storage area, which we've had, we've had the insight from the staff that it's going to be a lot nicer, a lot nicer display than what is currently there. So, we're terribly excited about that. Jo-Ann's is consolidating and putting two, actually, one store into this location. And they're going from, help me, please stop me if I say anything wrong, because I'm sure I will. I think they're going from 9,000 or 10,000 feet to 24,000 feet. This is going to be their flagship store for Topeka. And then, I'm going to call it a major sporting goods store, because they're making the announcement, they, every time I say their name, which has been said tonight. But it's a major sporting goods store that has over 200 locations. They do $325 a square foot on average. And they have signed a lease with us, and are moving forward with approximately 72,000 square feet to basically occupy what is now, it's an old Kmart that was built in the 70s, and it's going to be converted. And it's, and, and let's, so let's talk briefly about, we're going to actually do two out parcels with sit-down restaurants. We're buying the name brands, building back from name brands, and tearing it down, raising it, and building a brand-new, approximate 6,000-foot building there. And then, we're doing an additional 6,000-foot building, and bringing three fast casuals to Topeka that are currently not here. So, the next, the next slide gives you a little aerial photograph, and it shows a little appendage on the north, where we're acquiring Mr. Klosman's property. Jeff suggested we do this, and it's really helped us understand what the benefits are. Obviously, the first, this was all started by, by the the furniture operation deciding to acquire and quadruple the size of their space. They went from approximately 40,000 feet to 180, when they bought the Macy's facility. And so, they are now selling their asset and backfilling it with somebody, you know, basically giving us the opportunity to do it. We went to Factory Direct, and we said, "We'd like to, we'd like to figure out a place to put you. We really don't have room for you, because we don't have enough space." We're planning on possibly doing a phase two, which y'all get to a little bit, and just talk briefly about that. And they said, "We really don't want to move. We want a better position if we move." So, we went and acquired, put on a contract, the Hofer Car Dealership, which was vacant across the street. And Factory Direct is in for building permits, and they are acquiring the Hofer Car Dealership, and renovating that, and expanding it, adding 6,000 square feet, and putting that back on the tax rolls. So, the city is not, is not losing that. Basically, the sales tax is moving directly across the street. So, we've got the furniture store, which moved to the mall, Factory Direct, which is, which is moving directly across the street. We've got Name Brands, which has been in the business, in business here for-
I want to say 10-plus years.
Yeah. It's been here quite a long time. They're based out of Tulsa, and they're working, I believe, on a lease at 29th and Fair Lawn, I think, is the location that they're pursuing. Orchardland is doing a brand-new store. They had a few, they had one five-year option on their lease. Their lease was almost up. They're going to get a brand-new store with, and they're thrilled, and they've been, and they've been good to work with, and we're in the final stages of executing that lease. So, obviously, we're going to get the new sporting goods store, which we project to do about $18 million in sales. Three fast casuals, sit-down restaurants, which will be on, one will be a gourmet hamburger place. One of them will be, what would you call Pepper?
Gourmet.
I'm sorry?
Gourmet Deli.
Yeah, gourmet deli. And then, what would you call the third one? Like a fast-
Philly Cheese Steak.
Philly Cheese Steak, but, yeah. But anyway, so, we're thrilled about that. And then, one other retailer, then Mr. Klosman is, is basically moving all his tenants that we're displacing by raising the building and building a new office building for them. So, we think there's tremendous benefits, and there's a little spreadsheet of how that works. During the anticipated life of the redevelopment, we believe that the, expected to receive an average of $425,000 annually, or $8.5 million in new tax revenue directly over the term. And Ms. Everhard, what he was saying with the net present value is the benefits are larger, but if you bring it back to today's dollars, then it's more in the $3.5 million range, because there's an erosion of that value, as you know. There's the, currently, the property's valued at $3.8 million. We're paying nearly double for the value, for the property, to acquire it, and it's worth that. So, it's on the tax rolls at a lower value than it probably should be. We're getting, I don't know if we should really go into all this detail. I think Jeff has done a good job explaining that. CID is a self-taxation. It's a pays-as-you-go. The city's not at risk for anything. We're advancing all the money and getting paid back over time based on our performance. And so, when they, they made it very clear, Mr. Coulson, Jeff, made it very clear that the city's taking no risk. And if we, if we participate in this, we want, we want to make sure that you're at risk and not us. So, we're creating an excess of 250 jobs is the plan, based on what these retailers have told us, both long-term and for college students and people looking for part-time employment. And then, we think that there'll be a nice boost in the sales tax as we, as we spend nearly $12 million, I think. Please stop me, because I'm doing this. We're working on several projects, and sometimes these numbers get confused. But I think we're spending nearly $12 million, so a lot of that merchandise, especially since we're going to work, we're planning to use McPherson, will be acquired here and purchased here, and so on, so, you know, depending on the availability. It's approximately $24.5 million with the interest that we are going to spend. It's 6.5. Can you go to the pie, the pie slide?
Yeah, I ended up going to the next slide. I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, let me, let me slide on. I don't know if anybody wants to talk about the incentive structure. It's a 1% add-on sales tax. So, if a cost, if a person that is, is, you know, cognizant of that, or has a philosophical problem with that, I've done dozens of Home Depot projects, and Home Depot, who sells $4,000 kitchen jobs, has not had a problem. And Walmart, at the racetrack, Walmart and Sam's both went in a 1% CID. So, retailers that are, that are selling large-cost items versus a $4 sandwich or $5 sandwich is not having a problem with it. So, but the customer might. The citizen that lives in Topeka might. So, they, if they don't, if they have a problem with it, they may not shop there. But we haven't seen that as a practical problem so far. So, but anyway, we've got the threshold with the STRA, which was, you know, 14, I think it's 14.5 million dollars or some number like that, which we don't get a penny worth of sales tax until the project does 14.5 million dollars worth of sales. There's kind of an elevation of the new project, elevations of the two out parcels that are going to be built, some signage. The only difference on the signage is the staff asked us to reduce the size of the signage, so we took Crosswinds off of there. So, the three tenants, the sporting goods store, Orchardlands and Jo-Ann's, will be on the sign versus having the name advertised of the shopping center, because we, they're asking for large signage. We plan to close the property the middle of February, start construction then. And the Junior Orchardlands will be opening in July. The sporting goods retailer in August is our promise to them. Jo-Ann Fabrics in October of 2014. And the out parcels between September and October of 2014. This is not a spec project. There's not a single ounce of spec on this thing. The thing is all committed, and with the, with the exception of the retailer that's going in the vacant 2, 2,700 feet. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions. I kind of went quick through the process, but if there's anything else that I can answer, I'm thrilled to do so.
Thank you. Councilwoman Everhard.
Thank you. I guess my concern is, is there is even currently now empty storefronts along Wanamaker that, you know, that, you know, where they haven't filled them or people were there and left. Now, we're adding to that. And I haven't seen that there's been any real problem developing along Wanamaker Corridor as opposed to other parts of town. So, I guess I, my problem with the CID is I'm not really seeing why we have to have a CID to develop that particular section. And if you live in my district, I know you mentioned California Crossing. And of course, I know you're kind of the front-end person who puts this all together and then you don't stay in and run these businesses. Because California Crossing, if you were to look at today, certainly hasn't been successful. I mean, it's empty. And so, you know, and I don't see, when it's a 22-year plan, how there's a guarantee that all this stuff is gonna be still there 22 years from now because they don't always stay. So, that's my concern. I guess I don't know if I have any question unless you want to respond to that. But I, people in my district have already, I've had several calls of people wanting to know why we would do this, you know, when Wanamaker Corridor, you can't hardly drive down Wanamaker now for congestion. So, I guess if you've got a reply.
Well, as it relates to California Crossing, it hurts my heart when I go over and see it because I sold it and it was 100% leased. I think we had two vacancies, like 5,000 feet out of 180,000 feet. It's an absentee owner and with a lot of money. And I can't really, under my watch, it was very, very successful and I had long-term leases. But these leases are only 10 and 15 years. So, if these people don't shepherd that and watch it and love their tenants and encourage them and remodel the shopping center and spend, it looks like he hasn't spent very much money, if any, on the fascia since I redid it in 1992. So, I apologize for that. But to address Wanamaker, it's unbelievable. It's a cherry. I remember, I can't, I really don't want to say the name, but there's a retailer on Topeka Boulevard, when I did California Crossing, that said, "Why would I ever go to southeast Topeka?" And it was so offensive to me because those people work hard, they keep their houses up. And I have never done a deal with that retailer. And I really don't want to say his name, but I thought it was in the front page. You guys probably know what I'm talking about. You probably remember it. And, but just like the people in southeast Topeka need to be respected and encouraged and have services, so does Wanamaker. The problem with, the potential problem with Wanamaker is that the retailer's starting to get old. This is the north side of Wanamaker that has not done as well as the core. And the property was built in the 70's. It needs to be completely renovated instead of just a Band-Aid put on it. We're spending, we're spending $4 million on the sporting goods front door. I mean, the elevations of it. It's double elevations. They got a storefront there, then a storefront facing Jason's Deli. So, it'll be beautiful when we're done. We're overlaying the parking lot, building new signage, getting rid of the, you know, unsightly Orchlins display and redoing it, meeting the setback requirements. So, for the landscaping, you know, landscaping the entire frontage. So, it's a policy decision, but other communities that have as exciting things going on as Wanamaker is doing CIDs because it's a self-taxation and allows the project to go forward. Quickly, Orchlins has a very inexpensive lease. It's, I'm not gonna say, you know, I like to use the word offensive. It's not offensive to me because that's the deal that they made, but I'm having to live with that lease. And the lease is 25% of what it should be as to the market. So, when I buy the asset, I've gotta come in and honor that lease. And I'm actually moving in and spending nearly a million dollars moving Orchlins and getting no uptick in the rent. And so, that makes it very, very difficult. So, if you're gonna come in and put your assets and your efforts together, you've gotta live with the existing conditions. And that's one of the major problems, along with Name Brands, which is a building that needs to be raised.
I think we're gonna need to stop this conversation right now, but hold that thought. If you have questions or other comments, my understanding is we'll simply pick this up when it gets into the formal meeting. And with that, we need to have a presentation on E311.
Yeah, thank you. Madam Chair, I'd like to ask that Monique Lade step forward and provide a summary of activity on E311.
Greetings, Madam Chair, Mayor, council members, City Manager. I came before you on October the 22nd and shared information at that time in regards to the scheduled launch on November the 2nd of Topeka E311. We're approaching the 90th day of the implementation this weekend, and we wanted to provide you with an update. E311 is a 24-hour customer service tool that provides constituents the option of either reporting a problem or finding answers to their questions. We believe that a lot of the problems that have been reported in the last 90 days have been solved in lieu of the E311 system. You see on the hand-up that was provided to you in the bottom right-hand section, the response time completed and closed request. I ask that you please note that the completed time does include weekends. As of January the 22nd, there have been 405 total requests that have been entered into the E311 system. 52% of those were completed within 48 hours. 26% of them were completed within five days or more. And I'd like to provide you with a further breakdown in regards to the 26%. 46% of that were street tickets and additional 13% were code-compliance tickets. The remainder consisted of various departments that either were completed, yet the respondent failed to go back and close the ticket, or they may have been an ask-a-question ticket, or a department may have requested for an extension of completion time so the task could be completed. We are creating high expectations and an accountability standard. With that being said, we're evaluating our procedures and identifying how we can become more efficient. We've identified that some tickets have been closed, lacking information detailing the actions taken to resolve the ticket issues. And departments are making an assertive effort to correct this action. We recognize that we have a long way to go, but we feel that we're on the right track. We've received very positive feedback about the program, and we're striving on a daily basis to make the E311 system an efficient program. Topeka E311 is available at topeka.org/e311 or free download in the App Store and Google Play Store. Thank you, and I'm open for questions.
Questions, Councilman?
I actually texted the City Manager the other day. And one thing that I suggest, I was at a meeting last night, and there were five very engaged citizens that are heavily involved, and none of them had heard of E311 yet. So, I think if there's anything that we can do from a communications perspective to get the word out, how the system works. One of the issues that was brought up from one of the constituents last night was it's not always easy to see how progress takes place. And so, that was another selling point for us to be able to say, "Well, that's what's nice about logging in a concern" because then you get updates and can kind of have an idea of where things are going and a case number and all that. So, I think the program's great and I think what we're doing with it is great, but how can we get more people to use it? That would be my goal. Thank you.
Councilman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Monique, I want to congratulate you on a very well-put-together tool that I think the city is going to be using a lot. I had a call this morning about an issue, and it happened to be a city employee. And I said, "Well, you can send me an email and I'll get the ball rolling there. You can also get on E311." And he said, "Oh, yeah, I work for the city. I know about E311." So, I think even the city employees are very much aware of it. And, you know, advertising it is what we need to do. My question is, I had, and I have been pushing it whenever I get calls from constituents. I had a call and I said, "Well, just go to E311 and fill out the forms." So, I had to email Suzie to find out where the complaint form was. And I'm wondering if that complaint form is something that we can put very visibly so people don't, so I don't have to get back into my email and say, "Well, you have to go here, here, and here to get to it."
Well, Councilwoman, I will definitely inquire with our IT Assistant Director to make that inquiry and be sure to get back to the council on that answer.
It's a great tool. Thank you so much for all the work.
Other questions, comments?
I have one tip perhaps. I usually just call Jenny and let her enter stuff for me. And she does a wonderful job. But one day, I decided to try and do it myself. And if you think about, like if you're buying plane tickets or something like that, it gives you an option to sign up and be a member of Delta or USA or whatever. Or you can be a guest and just go in and buy your ticket and get out. I say that because I wasn't sure I wanted to sign up and what that meant. So, it appeared to me that I could just fill out the ticket. If I thought about it, I should have known better because I know that the system wants to get back with me and they would have to know who I was. The system accepted my entry of all the stuff about the, there's an alley in that case. And so, I pushed the button and it never responded and I never heard back. And later, I figured out it was probably because it didn't stick. But I'm not sure it was really clear to me that I had to sign up once upfront in order to then participate in the system. So, that might be something to think about in terms of what's on the website or how we market it.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you so much. The report's wonderful. Appreciate it. City Manager?
We have nothing. I believe the Mayor had a couple of comments that he wanted, a couple of ideas that you wanted to throw out.
If I could take just a couple of minutes rather than at the end of the meeting. I think it's easier sometimes to do them now. First of all, I want to comment that the Citizens Review Committee that this board created had their first meeting last Thursday. And will continue to meet regularly on Thursdays at 1:00, unless they change. It's their choice how and when they meet. And there is a website. It is on the city's website that you can go to where you have become involved. It's in a couple of different ways that you can get to it. And if any citizens, council members wish to participate in that, they certainly can go to that website and let it be known. I have forwarded to them the suggestion made by the council that perhaps the committee appear with the council at some point so that the council could share their views about the work that they're doing. I know, early on, they are hopeful of having some people with backgrounds in city government speak to them to help give them an overview of some of the directions that they should go and how they could handle things. So, you know, the six months can go rapidly. The first couple of months here, they really want to start to try to maybe just receive information. And then, as they move ahead, they would be then more discussing recommendations, considerations that they would bring back to the council. And then, the second item I was going to mention, as you know, two weeks ago tonight, or two weeks ago, the City Council approved the ordinance pertaining to the number of council meetings. And the City Manager and I have been working on this and we see implementing that in the month of February. So, according to that ordinance, the council will have meetings the first three Tuesdays of February. Now, as you know, the charter ordinance, we also handled that night. It's not going into effect yet. So, meetings will continue exactly as they are right now. We will have work sessions. The agenda does not change. We continue to have first readings. So, the only change according to this ordinance is that fact of we will start having three council meetings per month the first Tuesday of the month. And that is all, Madam Chair.
Is there any other business for the work session? We stand adjourned. We'll reconvene in three minutes.